Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Om Jnana Kimrindasya, Jnana Jana Shalakaya, Chakshurun Militam Yeena, Tasmai Sri Guraveena Mahaa. Sri Chaitanya Manu Bishthum Stapi Dum Yeena Bhootale Swayam Rupa Ktaamayam Dadaati Swakadanti Kam. Vandeham Sri Guru Sri Utapakamalam Sri Gurunvaishna Vamsya. Agroupam Sahavna Rabuna Thaanvitam Tam Sajivam. Saadvaisam Sabadutam Parijana Sahitam Sri Krishna Veetanyadevam. Sri Radha Krishna Paagam Sahavana Lalita Sri Vishakam Vitam Shra. Namom Vishnu Padaya Krishna Preesthaya Bhootale, Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Nithinamine. Namaste Saraswade Deve Gauravani Pracharinay, Nirvisesh Shunyavadi Paschatyadeeshatari. Jaya Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda, Sri Advaita Gadaadhara, Shri Vaasadi Gora Bhaktavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaya Thadaliye, Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya, Taj Bhaktaaya. Mukam Karoti Bachalam, Pangum Langayate Girim, Yat Krupatham Ham Vandeham Sri Guru Nidhanatharinam. Brahmanandam Agavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Ishwaram Hari Om Tatsat. Hi Krishna, so welcome all of you after a blissful week of wonderful celebrations, blissful celebrations. We are back to BAU, what is that business as usual, isn't it? So if you are thinking in the last week, how are you going to express our gratitude to Sheila Prabhupada, right? So much, so many of us were writing our offerings, offering our gratitude to Prabhupada, right? But it is not one day that we want to show our gratitude to Prabhupada, right? We want to show gratitude to Prabhupada every minute, every second of our life. And how do we show gratitude in the entire life? We show gratitude to Sheila Prabhupada, the entire life, we are following his instructions. We are chanting sixteen rounds with the Hare Krishna Mahamanta. By studying Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavatam, Chaitanya Charitaamrata every day, at least Bhagavatam, Nityam Bhagavatasevaya. That is a prescription given by Prabhupada every day, Nityam Bhagavatasevaya. And studying Sheila Prabhupada's books, nothing pleases Sheila Prabhupada more than distribution of his books. And more important than distribution of books is the study of Sheila Prabhupada's books. Prabhupada used to tell, study what you are, what you are, what you are, only if you study my books, you will be able to go and tell them what is there in that book, right? I am always reminded of this. One day Prabhupada, late in the night, ten o'clock, he was sitting inside his room. At that time, one lady comes back with a book bag with lot of books. And then Prabhupada wants to know, right? Prabhupada tells his servant, go and call her, I want to talk to her. And then, you know, this lady is so excited, oh, Prabhupada is calling me. And then she goes and said directly to Prabhupada's room and Prabhupada, Prabhupada asked her, whom all did you meet, what did you tell them? And then Prabhupada, and she told, I was in the airport, I met so many different kinds of people. You know, some of them were students, some of them were working, some of them were professionals. And then, you know, Prabhupada asked, what did you tell them? And then she was able to quote from Prabhupada's books, this is what I showed them, I told them about this. Prabhupada was so happy, so pleased, right? So if we take our book, book bag and go for distribution when we don't know what is there in the books, not much, right? The effort itself is very, very good, is commendable. But it would be more pleasing to Sheila Prabhupada if we know what is contained in Sheila Prabhupada's books. So in this session, we are trying to do that for the pleasure of Prabhupada. You are going to read Sheila Prabhupada's book, every book, you know, it is like, some of us may think, oh, I know it already, I have already read it every day, every time Prabhupada is telling the same thing. Why should I read different books, everything has got the same thing? Yes, Prabhupada has given the highest truth in every perpote. But if we have realized even one perpote of Prabhupada, we would not be in the state we are in. So why, what do we need? Krishna tells Arishana, right? Abhyasat Kounte, right? We have to keep practicing because we have Kaliyuga Buddhi, right? We forget, whatever we need to remember, we forget, unnecessary things we remember, what that person told me that day, what that person did to me that day, all that we will remember. But what Prabhupada just told, how I can transform my life, that, that thing we forget, isn't it? So Abhyasena, this is the formula that even Krishna told Arishana, isn't it? More so in the, in Duaprayuga only told. So in Kaliyuga, more so we need to have this repetition. Harer Nam, Harer Nam, Harer Nam Ayivakevalam, Kalona Stiva, Na Stiva, Na Stiva, Gati Ranyatha. Except for Hari Nam, there is no cure. Otherwise, one day we are chanting, next day we don't have any mood for chanting, we think watching a movie will help us get over our immediate suffering or pain. Watching a TV serial will help us, right? That is our conditioning, that is why we need to hear, we need to read Prabhupada's books more and more and more. That we realize that the only solution is Krishna consciousness, there is no other solution, right? There is no other even temporary solution, we watch some serial and then we take those dialogues are running in our head, adding to our anxiety, isn't it? We think we are going to get relieved from our misery by looking at somebody else's story, right? I am just thinking of one devotee was mentioning, when there is a power cut in the house, right? Recently, we've been experiencing a lot of it, right? When there is a power cut in the house, what do we do? Immediately we go out and check, are the neighbor's house power is gone? That is fine, we are happy, right? If their house power is gone, then we will call up electricity board, society will complain, you will take action. But when it is, I mean, next door neighbor also has issue, he will do it, why do you have to do it? He will do it and electricity will come, so that is our attitude. That is what is attitude we carry even in our spiritual life, that is why where we are. When we decide to take a control of our lives and take the actions given by our spiritual authority, not waiting for others to do everything for us, right? Quick fix, do two-minute Maggie, we all want fast food. And then take two-minute solution, two hours will not do it, one minute I will do it, formula give it. Right? When we go for book distribution, people say, oh, you are, you are looking so happy. Tell me one, one minute only I can spend, tell me what I can do, I want to be happy, right? What is this investment? One minute for lifelong happiness, right? If life was that easy, then we will not be struggling like this, isn't it? So we need to, Prabhupada mentions in many of these perpotes, we need to understand the reality of this material world. Right? This material world is Dukkhaale Mashaashvatam. The only way that we can be happy even in this material world, Patma Patra Ivambasa, like a lotus leaf on the water, is by becoming Krishna conscious. By accepting everything that is happening in my life as, you know, I should be getting much, much more suffering because of my bad karmas, because of my bad desires in the past. But because I am practicing devotional service, because I have accepted Prabhupada as my preeminent Siksha Guru, because I am studying Sheila Prabhupada's books, I am getting the understanding. I should be suffering much more by the mercy of Guru and Goranga, what I am getting is just a token of what I should be actually getting. And when we develop this attitude of gratitude, then we will give more importance to this process, A B C D square formula. So that is we want to reiterate ourselves, as we come back to business as usual, celebration is over. We've got a lot of mercy during the celebrations, now is the time to utilize that mercy, right? Like the, like the rain, right? It falls on the desert, it falls on the fertile soil also. Where the soil is fertile, immediately plants grow. In the desert, the rain falls and no, nothing happens. So we have got all the mercy, now we have to ensure that our heart is fertile. So that the, the Bhaktilatha, the seed, the seed of Bhakti we have already got by the mercy of Guru and Goranga. Now we need to cultivate it by our chanting and hearing process, which is business as usual for a devotee. So with that short introduction, let us, let us now do what is most important in this age of Kali. With the person who has actually brought it to it, with the person who, who by his purity has enabled us to practice it in this age of Kali. Let us chant one round of Hare Krishna Mahamanta with his divine grace, Abhiswaranarvind Bhaktivedanta Swami Sri Prabhupada. Namom Vishnu Padaya Krishna Preesthaya Bhootale, Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Nithinamine. Namaste Saraswade Deve Gauravani Pracharinay, Nirvisesh Shunyavadi Paschatyadeeshatari. Jaya Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda, Sri Advaita Gadaadhara, Shri Vaasadi Gora Bhaktavinda. Jaya Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda, Sri Advaita Gadaadhara, Shri Vaasadi Gora Bhaktavinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare.[916.14]
Yesterday where we recited the Bhagavad Gita and then we also studied Krishna consciousness, the topmost yoga system. So yesterday we were studying how, um, this is the one of the famous lectures of Shri La Prabhupada, which is this chapter. Uh, where Prabhupada is talking about uh how Krishna consciousness is not an artificial imposition on the mind. We are not trying to put into a, put into our mind anything that is not already there, right? Uh, Prabhupada is explaining how. Hmm, Krishna consciousness is already there in the hearts of all of the living entities. However, we have forgotten, uh, this Hare Krishna Maha Mantra, we have forgotten our connection with Krishna. And we have overloaded our heart with lot of love, Anarthas such as lust, anger, greed, pride and illusion. Because of that, we are not able to uh feel the presence of the Lord in the heart, we are not able to. Identify ourselves as a servant of the Lord, we are not able to identify ourselves as part and parcel of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. So what is this Hare Krishna Maha Mantra going to do? This Hare Krishna Maha Mantra is going to revive our dormant Krishna consciousness. It's going to revive our lost relationship with the Supreme Personality of Godhead. Who is our dear most father, who is our dear most friend, who is our dear most beloved, who is our dear most. Uh, uh, friend, you know, or any, any relative, right? Who is our dear most, Suhuradam Sarvabhutaana, Krishna himself says in Bhagavad Gita. Uh, who is our supreme valisher, who is our supreme friend? Uh, but we have uh kind of broken our relationship with Krishna. And Krishna is still coming with us in Tathama Paramatma and he is just waiting for us to turn back and. Hmm, and acknowledge the presence of the Lord in our life, hmm, he is always willing to guide us. Hmm, and then Prabhupada also talks about the three seeds of the Maha Mantra. Hara, Krishna and Rama are the transcendental seeds of the Maha Mantra, that's what Prabhupada explains. Hara refers to the internal pressure potential of the Lord, Krishna refers to the one who is supremely attractive. And Rama refers to one who gives pleasure, right? Uh, in some places, Prabhupada says Rama refers to Radha Raman, one who gives pleasure to Shrimati Radharani, right? So these Hara, Krishna and Rama are the transcendental seeds of the Maha Mantra. And by the grace of Mother Hara, one gets the favor of Lord Hari, that's what Prabhupada mentioned here. Alright, so uh let us quickly continue with our reading, uh, I can see Shridhar Prabhu's hand up, yeah? Shridhar Prabhu, please go ahead, the word Hara is the form of addressing energy of the Lord from there.
Hare Krishna Dhanod Pranam Madaji. The word Hara is the form of addressing the energy of Lord. And the word Krishna and Rama are the forms of addressing the Lord himself. Both Krishna and Rama means the supreme pleasure. And Hara is the supreme pleasure energy of Lord, changed to Hara Hai Rai in the, in the vocabulary. Hmm, the supreme pleasure energy. The supreme pleasure energy of the Lord helps us to reach the Lord. The material energy called Maya is also one of the multi-energies of the Lord. And we are living entities are all, also energy, marginal energy of the Lord. The living entity are described as a superior, superior to a material energy. When the superior energy is in the contact with the inferior energy. Uh, and incompatible situation arises. But when the superior marginal energy is in contact with the superior energy called Hara. It is established in its happy, normal condition, Hare Krishna. Shall we continue?
Yeah, thank you Prabhu. Harybol Dhanatna, thank you Prabhu. So here Prabhupada is talking about the marginal energy of the Lord, hmm, we are also energies of the Lord. Hmm, as much as uh, you know, the Bhiranga Shakti or the Antaranga Shakti. But we are called marginal energy of the Lord, called Tata Asta Shakti, right? Tata means refers to the banks, you know, Tata means like the banks of the ocean or the banks of the, you know, the beach like that. So what happens is the bank, sometimes it's wet and sometimes it's dry. Like that, we being the marginal energy of the Lord, sometimes we are tilting towards the internal energy of the Lord. And they are so enthused, enthusiastic to practice devotional service. Because we are tilting towards the, uh, towards the pressure potential of the Lord, internal energy of the Lord. And sometimes we are towards sense gratification, right? Sometimes we are uh into a completely trying to exploit and what is in it for me? Hmm, like that we become like, that means we are inclined towards enjoyment propensity or towards the Bhiranga energy of the Lord, right? Most of the times we are in the Bhiranga Shakti, trying to exploit material nature. Hmm, such a Prabhupada is saying, uh, we are the marginal energy of the Lord, we have the potency to. Go towards internal pressure potential of the Lord or go towards the. The uh, the inferior energy of the Lord. Uh, when we move towards the inferior energy of the Lord, that's proper talks it about, talks about it as an incompatible situation, why? Because we are Jiveera Swarupahay Krishna Nitya Das. But when we forget our position of being a servant and trying to give pleasure to the Lord. When we give, try to be, give pleasure to ourselves, then it is an incompatible situation. And such an incompatible situation, we can never be happy. Hmm, Prabhupada gives example of how a fish can be happy in the water only, right? When you take the fish out and you give fish all of the luxuries, right? Uh, you, you give fish a lot of food to eat, this, that, everything. But a fish out of water is death for the fish, a fish can never be a happy outside water. Similarly, Seva, uh, Seva to the Supreme Lord, Seva to the living entities is the constitutional function of the living entity. When we are not engaged in Seva, but when we try to exploit others, when we try to enjoy ourselves. Without rendering service to others, it becomes an incompatible situation, just like a fish out of water. That is why we experience frustration most of the time, hmm, that's what Prabhupada is explaining here. Uh, as an incompatible situation, alright, so now let's go forward. Sumathi Madaji, please go ahead, these three words, yeah?
Hare Krishna Madaji Dhanatna.
Hare Krishna Dhanatna.
These three words namely Hara, Krishna and Rama are the transcendental seeds of the Maha Mantra. The chanting is a spiritual call for the Lord and his energy to give protection to the conditioned soul. This chanting is exactly like the genuine cry of a child for its mother's presence. Mother Hara helps the devotee achieve the Lord, Father's. Achieve the Lord Father's grace and the Lord reveals himself to the devotee who chants this mantra sincerely. No other means of spiritual realization is as effective in this age of quarrel and hypocrisy as the Maha Mantra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare, Hare Krishna Madaji. Couldn't hear you Madaji.
Oh, sorry, I'm unmuted, okay, Hare Krishna. So Prabhupada is mentioning here about Hara, Krishna and Rama being the transcendental seeds of the Maha Mantra. And how Mother Hara hmm, or Shrimati Radharani helps us attain the favor of Lord Hari. Right, the other day we were talking about this wonderful uh story hmm, which I heard from his grace Amarendra Prabhu. Hmm, he was talking about how when a child, you know, uh, you know, the father, the neighbors, you're all playing with the child. Uh, suddenly the child uh does his potty, what happens? Uh, if the father is holding the child, immediately the father passes the child to the mother. Okay, you go clean the baby and then bring him back, right? So the mother takes the baby inside, cleans very nicely, put nice powder, gives a nice bath. Put nice powder etcetera, nice dress, you know, kajal and that, you know, drishti potta and everything. Uh, and then what happens when the child bring, when the child is brought out by the mother in such a condition? Not only just the father, the neighbors, all of them want to play with the child, they all want to hold the child in their hand. Hmm, similarly, we are all, uh, currently, what are we? We are all in Malamutra, uh, actually, we are actually with the, with all of these Anarthas, hmm, it is like, it is like, um. We are in such a, such a, um, um, you know, uh, the opposite of pure, impure condition, we are such an impure condition. Uh, that we cannot directly approach our father, right? What do we have to do, we have to beg our mother, right? To, uh, to help us, to help us clear of all the Anarthas in our heart, lust, anger, greed, pride and illusion, right? Hmm, when we are cleansed of all of this and then when they engage in devotional service, then the Supreme Lord. Or the, so our Supreme Father, Lord Hari will be interested because of the recommendation of Mother Hara. Because of the recommendation of Mother Radharani, Shrimati Radharani will cleanse us just like the baby. Uh, is nicely cleansed, put on nice clothes, hmm, and nice powder and nice fragrance. Uh, the father also wants to greet the child and play with the child, right? Otherwise, when the child was extremely filthy with potty and everything, the father immediately gave the child to the mother, isn't it? So we have the same protective embrace of our mother, Shrimati Radharani, right? So once we cleanse ourselves, this entire process of chanting Hare Krishna Maha Mantra is a benediction. Given by our mother, Shrimati Radharani. How much of it we adopt in our life, so much faster we will get cleansed. And then we will be accepted by Lord Hari, which means we will go back home, back to Godhead, we will develop Krishna Prema. The more we are taking the mercy of Shrimati Radharani, the more we are chanting Hare Krishna. The more we are hearing about the glories of the Lord, hmm, the more we are getting cleansed of our Anarthas. And we are able to understand what is the goal of life, what I should be doing. Red Krishna himself tells in Bhagavad Gita. Right now we are extremely foolish, but we think we know everything. Right, Prabhupada also said, in India, everybody knew who is Krishna, nobody wanted to hear from me, who is Krishna? In the Western world, they had a, they had an empty cup, uh, they could understand what I am saying. In India, we think we are extremely intelligent, we think we know everything, there is nobody else who can teach us, we know everything. And that is our greatest folly, that's why we are suffering and struggling. Because we don't want to hear to, uh, to a bona fide teacher who can help us get out of this entanglement. Of birth, death, disease and old age. So how much are we utilizing the mercy of Shrimati Radharani in cleansing our Anarthas? That much sooner we will be able to develop Krishna Prema and go back home, back to Godhead. That's what is mentioned by Prabhupada here, uh, what is that? No other means of spiritual realization is as effective in this age of quarrel and hypocrisy as the Maha Mantra. And who is giving us this Maha Mantra and helping us in the chanting of the Hare Krishna Maha Mantra? It is Mother Hara, Mother Hara helps us to attain the favor of Lord Hari, very, very clearly Prabhupada has mentioned, right? So we cannot, they take bits and pa, parcels of what we've heard. Oh, I like to do this, so I will do this, oh, I don't like to do this, I will not do this, no. Uh, I mean, in the medicine, in a, in a prescription from the doctor. We have to follow the diet as well as the medicine and we have to do it at, at the regular intervals, we have to take the right quantity. At the right time and with the right diet, only then the prescription will work. Only then the medicine will enable us to heal ourselves. Otherwise, we will take, whenever we want, we take one medicine, the next day we don't take. Uh, if we do that, then, uh, you know, side effects will happen, isn't it? Hmm, that is true of anything in this material world of which we have perception. We have experienced this, yeah, right? When we take the right dose, when we take it for the right number of days, when we take it with the right diet, then our disease gets cured. Similarly, our disease of material existence, our disease of exploitation, our disease of sense gratification. Requires the diet of Krishna Prasadham and the medicine, Aushadi Maya, Nasi Baro Lagi, Hari Naama Maha Mantra, Lavat Tumi Magi. Right, Hare Krishna Maha Mantra is our medicine and the diet is Krishna Prasadham. And the favorable environment is the four regulated principles. That will enable our Bhakti Lata Beja, you know, to grow into a nice Bhakti Lata and go back home, back to Godhead, right? So that is what we need to develop. Hmm, and the only process in this age of Kali is the chanting of the Hare Krishna Maha Mantra. Alright, now we are venturing into the next chapter, chapter seven. Uh, how Bhakti Yoga works, hmm, let's start with this, uh, Arjuna Madaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Madaji Dhanatna.
Hare Krishna Dhanatna.
In the Bhagavad Gita Krishna tells his disciple, hmm, and Arjuna, I am disclosing a most confidential part of. Knowledge to you because you are my dear friend. As it, as is, as stated in the fourth chapter, the Bhagavad Gita is spoken to. Arjuna because of his uh one qualification, he was a devotee, the Lord says that. The, and the mystery of the Bhagavad Gita is very confidential. Without being an unannoyed devotee, you, you cannot know it in India, in India. There are six, uh, six hundred forty-five uh different commentaries on the uh Gita. One professor has uh proposed that, there are uh. Proposed that Krishna is a doctor and Arjuna is the patient. And has made his commentary in that way, similarly, there are commentators and people who have. Um, who have taken it that everyone is uh perfect. And that they can interpret a scripture in their own way. As far as we are concerned, uh, we agree to read the Bhagavad Gita according uh to the. Instruction given in the Gita itself. Uh, this has to be taken through the Parampara, the system of disciplic succession. It is being uh taught by the Supreme Person because uh you are my dear friend. I desire that you may become prosperous and happy, there, there I speak to you. Uh, Krishna wants everyone to be happy and perfect and prosperous, but they do uh not want it. Sunshine is open to everyone, but if someone wishes to remain in darkness, what can the sunshine do for him? So the Gita is open to everyone, there are different species of life and lower and higher grades of understanding. And this, that is a fact, but Krishna says that this knowledge is for anyone. If one has lower birth or uh whatever, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't matter the.
Now Madaji, Madaji, we will stop here, okay, we will just discuss this, this section is a long paragraph. Hare Krishna, thank you. Alright, so here, very, very important, two, three points Prabhupada has mentioned, right? One is how do we understand the Bhagavad Gita? Before that, why did Krishna choose Arjuna to deliver this most important confidential knowledge? One is, one is Arjuna was not envious, Arjuna was not envious of the Lord, right? That is what it means to be a devotee, to be a devotee means to be, uh, to be proud of the Lord. You know, who is the master of everything and not be envious, right? Uh, even in Ishopanishad, the first verse, right, talks about. We need to understand that the Lord is the proprietor of everything. The Lord gives each one of us our quota according to our desires and according to our previous karma. So one has to accept what has been assigned as this quota and not be envious of another person. Oh, this person has got more, this person has got, uh, you know, so much more than me. That only causes anxiety for us, right? We cannot change the situation, it is anxiety for us and Krishna is very clearly told. Hmm, that this is only going to create more frustration in your life. When we are convinced that Krishna is the ultimate proprietor and I have got whatever I need to have to be happy and peaceful in this life. And how I utilize what I have been given now is going to determine my happiness, my destination for the future, right? So that will enable us to take a positive step and take a positive step towards where I want to be in the future, right? If I'm dissatisfied with the place I am, where I am right now, how can I change my destination by doing the same things what I have done in the past? I have to do something differently, I have to take a different approach, then I will reach a different destination. So I have been selfish all along, I have been envying everybody all along, that is why I have been, I am in this situation. So how do I change my destination to move towards that place where there is bliss, where there is eternal happiness, where there is prosperity? Where there is peace, where there is abundance, right? What do we have to do? I have to take this knowledge from the bona fide Parampara, right? I have to take this knowledge from a guru who is coming in a bona fide discipleship succession, right? Right, Arjuna heard it from Krishna directly, right? And the same message is passed down in four bona fide Paramras, we've already discussed that, right? Sri Sampradaya, Kumar Sampradaya, Brahma Madva Godeya, Godeya Vaishnava Paramfra and Rudra Sampradaya. Where Lord Krishna himself has given the knowledge to Lakshmi Devi, to Lord Shiva, to Kumaras, to Brahmaji. Hmm, and in this way, the four bona fide Paramras are teaching us exactly what Krishna taught to Arjuna. So if you are taking that, that learning and we are applying it in our life and we are transforming our life. Then we can expect ourselves to be in a better position later on. This is a preparation, right? In one day, nothing is going to happen because we have accumulated these Anarthas over millions of lifetimes. But now by the grace of Guru and Gorangav, we are on the right path, yes. So we have to continue to be on the right path, doing what we are doing correctly, right? By hearing from our bona fide authority and as we progress, then we know that for sure we will be reaching that destination, right? I was hearing his grace Chetan Charan Trabu, was also mentioning in the morning, right? What did the Chetan Charan Trabu say, right? In this endeavor, there is no hard work that is required, we don't have to, uh, we don't have to work hard, we don't have to do Ashtanga Yoga. We don't have to do meditation twenty-four hours a day, we don't have to give up completely sense gratification, we don't have to do anything, right? Uh, even like, for example, for some of us, you know, at least for myself, I can say, you know, we want to reduce obesity, what do we have to do? We have to do exercise, we have to, uh, you know, go to the gym, this, that, so much thing, so much endeavor we have to do. Uh, but Chetan Charan Trabu was saying, there is not much endeavor required in the spiritual path. There is a nice lift that is made, the guru is already there in the lift, he is telling us what we have to do. What we need to do is simply we have to get into the lift, we have to make a choice to get into the lift and remain in the lift, right? It will go to the first floor, it will pick up more people, we have to remain in that lift. If you are getting enamored by the second floor, oh, wonderful, there is sense gratification, oh, this person looks so happy. Uh, we get out of the lift, then again we are lost, isn't it? So what we have to do, we just have to remain in the lift, continuing with the process that is given by our guru. And then in this way, slowly but surely, if it is the twenty-fifth floor or the forty-fifth floor or the nine-hundredth floor, which is Krishna Prema. We will reach that for sure. If you are following the process in the association of devotees staying in the lift, we don't have to climb forty-five floors. We don't have to climb so many steps, right? That we have to do for our material body upkeep, that is all the endeavor, hard work we have to do, but we have to do it. Why? Because it is an instrument for us to attain Krishna Prema. Hmm, but as regards our spiritual life, it is Susukam Kartumavyayam, simply staying the lift along with the devotees, following their instructions. And then we will, we will go back home, back to Godhead, we will attain our desired destination without much hard work. Simply by deciding to be there and doing what we are told by our spiritual authorities, hmm, that's what is given here, right? If someone wants to remain in darkness, uh, that is the person who wants to get out of the lift, right? Thinking, oh, there is lot of, uh, there is lot of fun outside, there is lot of sense gratification, let me get out of the lift. Those are people who want to remain in the darkness, those are people who want to remain in this material world. But if someone wants to go back home, back to Godhead, who has understood the frustration that is caused in this material world. Such a person will remain in the lift, right? We cannot help, we can take a horse to the water, we cannot make the horse drink. Hmm, similarly, we have all got this process of chanting Hare Krishna, following the four regulated principles, right? Now it is our choice, how much of it we want to take advantage of, so that we attain our destination as soon as. Alright, so Minakshi Madaji, please continue, so the Gita is open to everyone from there.
Uh, Madaji, the Gita?
Okay. From here, so the Gita is open to everyone.
So the Gita is open to everyone, there are different species of life and lower and higher grades of understanding exist, that is a fact. But Krishna says that his knowledge is for everyone, if one has lower birth or whatever, it doesn't matter. The Bhagavad Gita offers transcendental subject matter, everyone can understand, provided he goes along with the principle as stated in the fourth chapter. That is, that the Gita is coming down in disciplic succession. I first of all instructed this yoga system to the sun god Vishwa, Vivevashwan, who taught it to Manu, who taught it to Ikshwaku. From Krishna, the disciplic succession is coming down, but in course of time, the disciplic succession was broken. Arjuna is therefore made the new disciple, in the second chapter, Arjuna surrenders. So far, we have been talking as friends, but now I accept you as my spiritual master. Anyone following the principle in this line accepts the guru as Krishna and the student must have present Arjuna. Krishna is speaking as the spiritual master of Arjuna and Arjuna says, whatever you are saying, I accept. Read it like that, not, I like this, so I accept it, this I don't like and so I reject. Madaji, can you, could you scroll up, Madaji?
Yeah, she reading is useless nonsense. Yeah, thank you Madaji, hi. Yeah, so we will, uh, two, three points that we can meditate upon. Uh, one is what we already discussed, right? Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, I gave this knowledge to sun god Vivevashwan who gave to Manu, to Ikshwaku. Hmm, in this way, the discipleship succession was broken during the passage of time and the same knowledge has been given by Krishna to Arjuna again. And the same knowledge, like we said, the four bona fide Paramras also give the same knowledge. Hmm, so that is a prerequisite to understand Bhagavad Gita and apply it in our lives, just like Arjuna applied the Bhagavad Gita. And he transformed his life, he didn't want to fight, right? Finally, what did Krishna tell Arjuna? Right, whatever is your desire now, you do that, right? And then what does Arjuna tell, uh, what, what does Arjuna tell Krishna, right? I will do whatever you say, right? So we have to come to that conclusion, when we are studying Bhagavad Gita under a bona fide guru. We have to completely surrender ourselves to the instruction, right? Not accepting it in piecemeal, I like this, I will take it, I don't like to do this, I will not do it, no. When we accept it, we have to accept the instruction in full, uh, we already spoke about it, right? The diet and the medicine, right? We have to accept it in entirety and in this way, it is just a question of time when we will attain our desired destination, which is Krishna Prema. So with this, we will end here, um, we'll meet you all tomorrow again, twelve forty-five P M, we will quickly to Hari Nam Sangkirtan. And then we will see who are all there in today's session, hmm, our first B A U session. Namah Om Vishnopa Daya Krishna Krishna Bhutale Primate Bhakti Veeranta. Swami Nithi Naam Namaste Saraswate Deva Gauravani Prachari Ne. Nirviseshaa Shunyavadi Pascha Dyaresha Saari Jaya Vee Krishna Devi Khambhuya. Prabha Nityananda Ajayajweta Padadharashiva Sadhi Gauravakta Vrindajaya. Sri Krishna Vaidya Prabha Nityananda Sri Ajayajweta Padadharashiva Sadhi Gauravakta Vrindajaya. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare Govinda Jaya Jaya, Gopala Jaya Jaya. Radha Ramaana Hari Govinda Jaya Jaya, Jaya Gauravani Tajay Jaya Gauravani Tajay. Gauravani Tajay Jaya Gauravani Tajay, Radha Madhav Radha Madhav Radha. Jaya Jaya Jagannath Jaya Valadev Jaya Subhadra Jaya Sudashan Jaya. Balagopal Jaya Balagopal, Balagopal Jaya Balagopal Jaya. Jaya Prabhu Paadja Prabhu Paadja Guru Deen Guru Deen. Nita Gauravi Bol, Adivol, Adivol, Adivol. Jaya Samkirtan Ki Jay, Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay, Shri La Guru Deen Ki Jay, Nantakoti Vaishnava Vrindhi Ki Jay, Nitaai Gaur Premanande. Hare Hare Bol, Hare Krishna, so Dhanatna, all the devotees, uh, let's see who all we have today. Everyone can unmute themselves now, we have Shridhar Prabhu, Karpa Goli Madaji, Shoba Madaji, Ramya Madaji, uh, Nivedha Madaji, Sumathi Madaji. Anjana Madaji, Lita Madaji, Ummah Ishwari Madaji, Himma Madaji. Thank you all very much for joining in. Hare Krishna, so if there are any queries, realizations, we can take that. Uh, otherwise we will, uh, we will end the session, meet you all tomorrow morning for Brahman Murtha chanting five A M. And then we meet at twelve forty-five P M for Shla Prabhupada Book Study and Hari Nam Sangkirtan. Anyone has anything to share? Okay, fine, thank you very much. Thank you, Harybol, is everybody able to unmute, right?